Bothell City Council is back from executive session. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'm willing to entertain a motion. Oh, we do the pulled first. Okay. So, Councilmember Olson pulled AB 18100 Shoreline Fire Department invoice for Scott Self- Contained Breathing Apparatus SCBA billing. Councilmember Olson.
Yes, City Manager, I just would like to know if we know how much we're saving by doing this joint purchase, or should I ask the chief?
Since the fire chief put all the work into this, he should answer the question and get the credit.
Great.
Thank you. So, basically, the cost of the SCBA's, well, there's two things. We saved money twice. One, by doing a cooperative purchase with four departments, we got the price about half of what it cost off the list price. They listed for about almost $13,000. We got them for $6,284 per unit, complete unit. And then, to combine that, we went out for an AFG grant, and we were able to get a grant on that. So, we added that on top of the savings we already got, and we saved at least $286,000 with the grant alone on that. And that's not including the $6,000, the half the price. And I don't have the figure on what it actually wound up being with the grant and the purchase power, but it was significant. We were able to buy all 63 of them for cash out, it was $174,000. It would have, I believe we had budgeted around $350,000 if we didn't have the grant to start with, and it would have been more than that, but we were able to save quite a bit of money on that. Does that answer that?
Yes, that answers it. I was just wondering how great of a savings we were getting, and it seems quite substantial, so.
It was significant. It's going to do us good, because these things actually time out in March of 2019. The bottles we have for them, the hydrostatic testing date goes out, and they're past their retesting dates. We'd be forced to buy all new bottles for an old pack, so it didn't make any sense. We were kind of coming up against the wall in this, so it just worked out perfectly to get this grant and this bid together right now.
Good. Well, thank you very much.
Yes, Councilmember Agnew.
I have another question for you, chief. Are you going to donate what you have, the SCBA's, to another country?
You know, we can certainly look into that. I'm not sure that we have a plan that far ahead, but we've done that in the past, and yes, they're functionally working fine. It's just that the bottles, like I say, that go with the kits are wearing.
Right, they need to be hydrotested.
So, yeah, the SCBA's themselves were actually retrofitted several years ago to bring them up to compliance, so they're still functional, and they still work. It's just that it wouldn't be prudent to go ahead and purchase new bottles for these existing ones when the NFPA requirements were changed for 2018, so they're under new standards anyway.
Yeah, I just thought that, I think a lot of the departments up in the Northwest send a lot of their equipment down to Central and South America, because they don't have the funding that we fortunately have.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we've done that, but I can certainly look into that.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion on AB 18100.
Move the recommended action.
Moved by Councilmember Agnew, seconded by Councilmember McNeil. Please place your votes. Motion passes unanimously with Mayor Rayum absent and excused. Okay, on to the consent agenda. Could someone please make a motion?
Move the recommended action.
Councilmember Agnew makes the motion, and Councilmember McNeil seconds. Motion passes unanimously with Mayor Rayum absent and excused. So, now we're moving on to a public hearing, AB 18105 Affordable Housing Code Amendments. And Mr. David Boyd is here to present.
Thank you, and good evening.
Stephanie, may I, would you like to open the public meeting?
Oh, yes, I would like to open the public meeting. Is that all I have to do? Okay, thanks.
Good evening. Tonight, we're here to discuss Affordable Housing Code Amendments. This is the purpose of tonight's hearing, is public hearing and council action on the proposed code amendments. I'm going to talk a little bit about the background and basis for these code amendments in the comprehensive plan and our housing strategy. We're going to review the proposed code amendments. I have those, the packet, available to put up if council wants to do a page-by-page review, listen to public testimony, and then the potential council actions to adopt the proposed code amendments, make modifications, and/or give additional direction to staff for additional work. So, just to talk a little bit about where we're at in the overall housing strategy process, we've talked about this flow chart at the May 1 adoption of the housing strategy, and now we've moved on past that adoption into the work program. So, this is actually the second item of the work program that we've started to address. We've taken some of the ADU amendments to Planning Commission, but this is the first one that's coming to council. So, tonight's amendment is adopting a key element of the housing strategy, which is to provide a foundational code section allowing affordable housing provisions for future rezones and other capacity increases. The other kinds of capacity increases could be code amendments that allow additional density, as well as incentives that we're not preparing tonight or proposing tonight, but that's another tool that we could have in our toolbox if we adopt these foundational elements tonight. I also, I jumped into this without recognizing a few key folks that have helped us get to this point, and we're joined tonight by Arthur Sullivan and Mike Stanger from Arch, a Regional Coalition for Housing, and we're also joined by David Vleep, Planning Commission Chair, and they're both, they're all available to answer questions about the process to date, should council have specific questions for them or that they can best address. So, the Affordable Housing Code Amendments creates a new Bothell Municipal Code Chapter 12.07, the purpose of which is one of the means to meet the city's affordable housing goals. It includes definitions that will be expanded as additional elements and affordability levels are added in the future. There's a section that's reserved for future references to each area where new development requires affordable housing, and that establishes levels of affordability and the prescribed percentages for those specific areas. For example, and this slide shows the downtown potential rezon of General Commercial to SR522 corridor that would likely include an affordable housing requirement for that area, because it will be increasing the residential capacity in that area, and that will be, this section will include a reference to the downtown sub-area regulations where the detailed regulations will be spelled out. This section, new chapter 1207, also includes general requirements that address a threshold for compliance, duration of affordability, designation, and standards, and availability for affordable units. There's an asterisk by the threshold for compliance. The Planning Commission wasn't able to reach a decision, a consensus, on the threshold, so the proposed ordinance you have includes the staff recommendation to apply these requirements to developments of five or more dwelling units. And we chose that because in our analysis of potential rezones, we've, there was a definite bonus of units at that five-unit threshold. There were some cases where you'd get a bonus below that, but not in all cases, and also because five units is our threshold for going to a full subdivision, so that's, in the way we do business, that's a natural way that's easy for staff to work with. So, we are proposing to the council adopt that threshold. The sections 2 through 4 of the ordinance provide a foundation for potential future single-family upzones and/or incentives with affordable housing provisions, including the possibility that in those situations, that those single-family zones could utilize duplexes to provide the required affordable unit. And this is a provision that could be deferred and adopted when and if future single-family upzones occur, but we've done the groundwork for this. It's ready to go, to be put in the code, to be utilized when those do come forward. So, that's the reason that we've put the whole package for your consideration. In response to council questions, we are proposing some minor changes to clarify that these would only be allowed in very limited situations where duplexes could be allowed in single-family zones, only in situations where there are increases in capacity and affordability requirements, and in that case, they could only be used to provide those affordable units. So, on this slide, also, there's a couple of examples of single-family developments that have employed this strategy in other parts of Arch's jurisdiction, and you can see that the development standards are the same. The height, bulk, dimensional standards are all the same as for single-family housing, but these are actual duplex units. So, with that, the action items and the next steps, questions, any questions for staff? And I'll defer to our experts with Arch for many of those, any public testimony, and council deliberations, and then motion and vote to adopt the Affordable Housing Code Amendments as revised. So, with that, any questions?
Who would like to go first? I think we'll do a round of comments, or questions, and then we'll do comments. Councilmembers, yours.
One quick question on page, I was, you know, learning the new language here. Everything in the gray box is not going to be in the final copy that's going to be signed by the mayor.
Correct.
So, I really care about, and I like, what has been crafted for duplexes. Is that, on page 88 of our agenda packet, there, it looked like there was a caveat, and I probably misunderstood it, of including duplexes in what's going for the mayor to sign, or will duplexes be included, what you just covered?
They will be included in what, they are included in what we've proposed to be adopted tonight, and we think it is important to lay that as part of the foundation for future single-family upzones.
Okay, I agree, I agree with you, and I wanted to make sure that that was happening, so thank you.
So, in your packets, you should have some questions and answers that we got today, and then also, those led to some minor revisions to pages 88 through 90 that were in your packet, too. Just to clarify and make it certain that these are only, this is a very limited situation where duplexes would be allowed.
Right, and it will be, if we approve this, it will be going forward?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Who else has questions? Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. So, the Planning Commission was unable to come to agreement regarding the size and threshold for requiring new developments to provide affordable housing after considering thresholds of three to five unit lots. Do you know what their discussion was, or what their concerns were at that point, that they could not come to agreement?
We had done some analysis that showed that, in some cases, smaller developments of less than five would actually get a bonus. There were some lots where, under R9600, for example, you would get two lots, and under 7200, you'd get three, but that wasn't the case in all situations. Once you got above that five-lot size, then there always was at least a one-lot bonus, and this is talking about, you know, for a single-family rezon. So, that was one issue, but three of the planning commissioners felt strongly that in any situation where you could be getting a bonus, you should be providing affordable housing. Three felt that, agreed with the staff recommendation to keep it at five, the same threshold as for a full subdivision, and one commissioner tried to strike a compromise at four, but that we couldn't get to a majority decision on that one.
Thank you. And I guess another question I have is, it also says there's a pay, a fee to fund affordable housing, to create affordable units. Maybe I didn't read the whole thing. Their expectation is, right, that there will be a fee?
Well, there's a section for alternative compliance, which allows for, in certain situations, for the affordable housing to be built off-site, or for the developer to pay a fee in lieu with the director's approval. So, it's not an automatic, and then if it did go to a fee in lieu, that fee would then be used to build affordable housing in the area.
So, could you explain to me what affordable units off-site would look like? What does that look like to you?
I'm going to defer to Arthur with Arch here, because he's done this in other jurisdictions, so I think he can give you a better explanation of that.
Perfect, thank you.
Good evening, Arthur Sullivan, Program Manager of Arch. That section has a variety of variations on alternative compliance, and I just want to emphasize what David said, which is that the way this is drafted, that using alternative compliance is at the discretion of the city, not the developer. So, it's one in which the city would have to be convinced whatever's being proposed would work. Most of the cities have shied away from doing alternative compliance, but examples of where it's been used is, we had two subdivisions in Redmond, which both were requiring like one affordable unit, and they were near one another, and so the city allowed them to move them, the two units, to be on the same site within a multiplex unit, or something to that effect. So, that's one example of where one developer doing a couple smaller developments was able to just sort of, you know, coordinate it through one of their other projects. For in-lug fees, that has sort of varied. That becomes funds that cities can use. Kirkland is right now using some of their in-lug fees to help pay for some of the women's shelter that you helped fund last winter. So, the other cities have sometimes just used that in order to leverage the type of affordability where projects are leveraging state and county and other types of funding to get the affordability significantly lower. So, Redmond did that last year, where they used an alternative compliance to fund, to help fund, put city funds into a project of 126 units immediately adjacent to where the light rail station will be in overlay, and that project will be using tax credits and state funds and county funds, but in order to leverage that, the city needed to find some resources to help that. So, that's really at the discretion of the city, and it basically would look towards what the city is trying to fund with their funding. It may go through the Arch process, it might be a special project that you're trying to do, but that's left to your discretion, the way the ordinance is drafted.
Councilmember Agnew.
Don't go too far, Arthur. You probably know more about this than anybody around here. This is our first endeavor at this. What do you think of what we're looking at right now?
So, I worked with your commission for almost a year in drafting this. I enjoyed completely working with your commission. I asked lots of great questions. They probed in all the areas I think need to be probed in, and they got stuck on one issue, but other than that, I think you've set a baseline. What you've done here, it's a little different than most other cities. Most other cities have a specific rezon, and they focus on that, and then all the administrative provisions. What we saw happen in other cities is, we worked with a city, and they do one neighborhood, they do a rezon, and they do the whole code to work for that, and then they go do another one. You know, I've been doing this for 25 years, and then they write the rules for that, and then four years later, you realize the rules aren't the same in the different areas. So, what you've done is, you've sort of set up the baseline of how to generally proceed, and then, and more cities have done this. So, we used a model of what some cities have done the last few years, of centralizing all the basic provisions of administering, but then, as you look at each neighborhood or each situation where you're looking at capacity increases, you can either as a neighborhood level or in a site level, you can focus on that element, but you'll have consistent administration and procedures and things along those lines. So, what you're doing here is what's taken some cities 10 years to get to that point of realizing, you've set up a system you can use in different circumstances, but keep a good baseline. So, what we've, like I said, we've worked with your commission, we think this is a key part of creating land use tools, to have this kind of detail within your code, and you're starting right out with that. So, that's my perspective.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all your assistance.
Who else has questions? Okay, I guess I'll go. As expected, I have a whole list. I sent these ahead of time, but I think it's worth the public hearing what some of the questions are, in case they have the same questions. So, in the executive summary, it talks about other capacity increases, and I took that to mean additional stories and added density, but, so, I asked, where is it covered in the code? And your response was, it's coming later when we do the sub-areas, I think, if I read that correctly. Are there anything, any other additional capacity increases, other than additional stories and kind of bonus lots that exist? I just wanted to get a feel for what else might be there.
Well, this section of code could also be used if we, in the future, look at incentives, voluntary incentives rather than these mandatory provisions. The one, the types of capacity increases that we've contemplated so far are the ones that we've talked about fairly recently in downtown of, well, the GC to SR522 rezon is an example of a rezon, but the other two possibilities in downtown, removing the density limit on, in the remaining downtown transition areas, that's a code change that would increase the capacity. And then lifting a height overlay would be a code change, at least in this one example that we're going to be looking at later on in the downtown area. There may be others that we haven't even contemplated here, but that's why it's not strictly limited to rezones. So, any code change that would create a potential bonus for a development opens the door for the, an affordable housing requirement.
So, it might include like cottage housing or that sort of thing, potentially?
Potentially, yeah, we haven't really, that's not one that we've really grappled with yet, but.
Okay, I'm just wondering, so it will be, it would, they'll be listed or whatnot in the individual sub-areas? Is that, I guess I'm having trouble wrapping my mind around the process.
Yeah, so it'd be good maybe to walk through how this could play out. So, once we have this foundational section, then when we bring forward some code amendment that would, that would create that nexus to allow an affordable housing requirement, we would pass code amendments for the sub-area that that area is in, or potentially multiple sub-areas, the Nike Hill rezones spanned between the Shelton View and Queensborough sub-areas. And then, we would also amend this new 1207, the section that's reserved, would reference all of the areas within the city where these mandatory requirements would apply.
And that might include just, rather than sub-area, or I guess, I'm trying to think, so, it just depends on where, it's not necessarily an entire sub-area, but say it's a spot zone, but that's in a specific sub-area, and that's where?
Right.
The ordinance would change.
We don't do spot zones, but.
Well, what do you call them?
But, yeah, limited, rezones would, so, but they would, they would, the home for those provisions would be in the sub-area regulations.
And then they'll be listed within this?
Within that.
Okay, thank you. That helps a lot, because I was really struggling with, where does this go, and where does that piece go? Okay, so that answered a couple of questions. On page 84, I had a question about the threshold for compliance. It's of the agenda.
Would you like me to pull that up?
Sure.
On the screen?
Then I don't have to look for it. So.
Oops, 84.
You're going up, you need to go down. So, what I was confused about is the threshold for compliance. The gray box says, okay, said it'll be by sub-area, but, okay, so we, actually, you answered that in this last question. So, the actions could apply to individual parcels or to particular zones, so it could be either. Okay. Sorry, I didn't have a chance to read through this all before the meeting. Okay, on page 86, I'm curious about E. So, at the top, it says, "The city may agree at its sole discretion to subordinate any affordable housing regulatory agreement for the purpose of enabling the owner to obtain financing for development of the property." So, that kind of like set off alarm bells in my head, and so I asked the question, does this mean the city can make the affordable housing regulations go away in order for financing to occur, and who makes that decision?
I'm going to defer to Arthur once again here.
This is not intended to relieve a requirement upfront. What this is intended to do is, in the private financing world, which we're, is projects working with private sector, that it's a challenge for a developer to get financing if, when these types of covenants are in place. So, what cities have been doing, for as long as I've worked here, is within the agreement, it says, if in the future, there's a foreclosure, then the city will have a provision to waive its affordability requirements if the foreclosure goes through. I've been doing this for 28 years, and it's never happened in a rental property. Ownership units, there, it's individual homes at a time, it can occur, but we've also added, but there, even more so, FHA will not loan on a home that has a provision, like an affordability provision, if the provision won't go away in the event of foreclosure. Now, what we've did, done, is built in some safety valves to help protect against it actually happening, which is the city's right to cure. City of Kirkland just did that last year on one home, where they actually bought the home out and then resold it in order to keep the covenant in place. So, the purpose of this is not to get away from the rules upfront, it's to create a scenario where, once the affordable units are created, the private sector people can go to the private market and still get funding, get private financing.
So, I guess what you say makes sense, but I'm wondering why it sounds so vague in the language and doesn't say something about foreclosure in it.
Because if we hope that we got really close about five years ago to FHA agreeing that you didn't have to do this, so that's why we put in vague language, is because we're holding out hope that someday, that financing world will come around, and we won't need to do this. So, that's why we kind of kept it open-ended, it's your call. The practice the last 25 years has been to include these types of provisions in order to allow the people that are developing the properties, or the homeowners, to be able to get financing. So, yes, you're right, it's a little open-ended, because those people can shift, and we don't want to be locked in if we get some flexibility and can do better.
And then, so who makes, so the city, I assume it's the developer? And then, so who makes, so the city, I assume it's the development director who makes that decision?
And that's basically in our boiler documents, but I'm sorry, yeah.
Just looking for the nod.
Right. So that's been, yes, that's been done through the administrative process. It's your call how you do it here, but that's how it's been done in other cities.
No, that's very clear. Thank you.
Yeah, and as Arthur said, that's our, that's the standard language that we put in there. So it technically is at the discretion of the director, but that's just the language that we would typically include anyway, for the reasons that Arthur stated.
Okay. So my next question's about payments in lieu. So it's at the discretion of the director, which gives the director a lot of power, which is great if you have a good director. I guess my question is, does it make sense to have any sort of check and balance? And what, what typically is, is, does the formula look like? Because we don't want to make it so attractive that they just pay the payment in lieu rather than build affordable housing.
If you had an attractive formula, it's still not the builder's call.
Oh.
It's always the city's call on a case-by-case basis. In other words, each project would have to apply to the city, the way this is drafted, and ask for the ability to do one of those things listed there. And then the director would have to, A, decide, yes, if it's even allowed, and B, under what scenario, and third, what would the, if in lieu was what's being proposed. That is very different than Seattle, where if you, if you read into this, the builder, the city establishes a number, and then it's the builder's call. And so here, on the East Side Cities for the most part, Bellevue has a similar provision for one part of their town. But in all the other cities, the other seven or eight cities that have these provisions, this is in here for the city's discretion on a case-by-case basis. And so the, to the second half of your question, the math that's been used is, we sort of do an analysis, and the standard is equal or greater affordability. So where we start in that analysis is we say, how much would it cost for us, the public, to build comparable unit that would have otherwise been provided? How much, if it's rental, would you, how much loan could you get? Or if it's a homeowner, how much could they borrow? And what is the difference between those two numbers? And it needs to be at least that much. And in most cities, like Redmond, we've argued, why would we agree to that? Because we're, you could just build it, and it's done. So Redmond has approved one in lieu fee in 20 years. That's sort of been their approach and stuff. So, but it's always at the discretion of the city. That's the starting point for doing the analysis, and whether or not you then say you want a little more, because we don't have the unit today, that's all part of that negotiation.
So when it comes to that formula, is there a process by which that happens? Or it just kind of happens behind the scenes? Or I guess I'm just wondering what the process is.
So if you call staff work behind the scenes, then.
Well, I just meant it's not on the dais. Sorry, I didn't mean to imply anything.
And the case in Redmond, actually, the way it starts is, we tell the builder to make an offer, you know, you have to propose something.
Oh, okay.
And then we sit down and we do, we look at costs in the area and land costs, et cetera, and we put together budgets. And we try to sort of say, well, from our point of view as staff, do we feel like that's a reasonable offer or not? Kirkland has, because they have a scenario where small projects with fractional, they have an, an automatic provision where for fractional units, they can pay. The city has gone through a process of establishing a number, but that, they've established a process. But for every site, it's different, because they look at, they get as specific as how much your land costs for that specific site. And so the number actually varies from, from property to property, even though the methodology is the same, because they look at how the variables change in different parts of the city or in different zoning areas.
Got it. So there's not, I guess I was thinking, is there a checklist that you have to kind of check some boxes before you're allowed? But it sounds like it's a really high bar.
That's generally with the cities I've worked with, they want that bar pretty high.
Okay.
And at a minimum, we have to justify, we've always had to justify to a director, they're going to get at least, they should be able to get as much, if not more.
So you work with the city's development directors?
We, we help to administer a lot of these programs, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. That actually is really helpful, because I didn't understand how that would work at all. So my next question was the duplex question. So I just wanted to, I guess I asked the question about what about neighbors with HOAs, and would those regulations supersede by the city? But it sounds like we're only doing that with the creation of new plats or subdivisions. So it's not a concern if you're in an HOA that someone could buy lots in an existing HOA scenario and build duplexes?
That, yeah, that would be an extremely unlikely scenario, that, that within an established HOA, you buy enough parcels to redevelop and, and create new lots that would then comply with the affordability requirement.
Okay. I just wanted to put that out there in case anyone got nervous. And then regarding the duplexes, are those meant to be affordable? Or is it just the fact that it's a duplex that makes it affordable?
They can only be done through this code provision if they are, if, if it's to meet the affordability requirement. So at least one, one unit in a duplex would have to be affordable. In the example I gave in, in the response, if, if you were in an area that was rezoned that increased the capacity from seven to 10 units, and the requirement is that 10% of the units need to be affordable, then one of those units would need to be affordable. The, this provision would allow, including on one lot, a duplex of which one of those units would be affordable, the other could be market rate. If it was a bigger development that had 20 units and had required two affordable units, then, then both units in a duplex might be affordable, or would be.
And if I could just add on to that, the, so, and this gets at one of your other questions. So when, when we put a restriction on a property that it has to be affordable, it also has an income level that goes with that, and that's determined at the time that we, we put the requirement in place for a specific upzone or capacity increase. That restriction goes with the property. So, and that is monitored, and there are annual reporting requirements that they have to provide to, to make sure that who's ever residing in that, if it's a rental unit, meets the income requirements that we've placed there. And that's all done through ARCH. They're the, the group that monitors that for the city.
I was just going to ask if that, that meant more work for the city staff. So thank you for that. I did have a question in regards to the, the income level, because I noticed in, in the ordinance that it said we were targeting 80% of median. And I'm sure I'm wrong, because I'm reading this in, in our ordinance, but I thought I had heard in one of the past planning commission meetings that you could, you, you can't go backwards, so you should start lower and then move up. But maybe I heard that wrong, and if I did, can you explain how that works? That's probably an Arthur question.
It is indeed. So I think you're referring to the definition where it says moderate income.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm going to make two points for you to hopefully address some of your questions. The first is, this, we were working on this around one particular rezone. And the first thing I would point out is, for this rezone, we were looking at primarily, we expected ownership housing. But you'll notice that you're defining moderate as 80% for ownership and 60% for rental. So the basic provisions say that whatever the market rate development is going to be, rental or ownership, the affordable units will be of the same kind. So they will be ownership or rental. Now, when you start doing the math and economics, housing at 80% of median for ownership is a lot further below market than if it were rental units, at 80%. So what you've done here, which some cities have evolved to in the last 20 years, is recognizing that ownership is different than rental and having different affordability levels in order to, A, address needs in the community, but also acknowledge the economic impacts and differences of what you're granting. So that's the first thing you've already done, by the way you've done this definition, is for the one that we looked at, you did lower for rental down to 60% of median, and then you kept the ownership at 80. Now, what will happen is, as we said, just like section, the one, the placeholder section, you will add references, we have some cities that have five definitions in this section, because City of Issaquah right now, in their central Issaquah plan, has four levels of affordability in different neighborhoods downtown and in different combinations, all based on the economics and getting, the city wanted more affordability. That's what you look at on a case-by-case basis. You might say, we'd like to get to a lower affordability level and get fewer units rather than get more to hire. That's a discretion, and that's the process in each scenario that you're looking at. And if you do land at different places, then we'll add more definitions to this section.
Okay, that makes sense, because I, because it said it in this framework ordinance, I wasn't sure the implication.
Right. This is not meant to be the end-all. This is a building section here.
Okay. Super, thanks. I have one last question, and that's because we received this in our packet tonight, the permitted uses table. So I noticed under dwelling units, primary, two units per structure duplex, it was crossed out, was R 9600, A 400, 7200. So I just wanted you to explain that.
So some of the questions that we got about this, both externally and internally, made us realize that the way we had set up this, this table in the footnote regarding duplexes was confusing and could, could lead to some misinterpretations. So we've tried to clean it up and basically put all of the provisions related to the limited cases where you can do, could do duplexes in a single-family zone in the description of the footnote, and, and leave the table essentially as it is. Just add the footnote to the, the row dealing with duplexes, and, and then add the language, add the phrase "in single-family zones" to the, to the footnote itself. So, so basically, the places where you can do duplexes by right remain the same. You can only do those in, in multifamily zones, R 5400A and more dense. And the only way you can do a duplex in a single-family zone under this provision is if, if you are providing, if it is an area that's been upzoned and an affordability requirement has been imposed.
Thank you. That's crystal clear. I'm sorry it was kind of redundant, but it was in the packet, and so I didn't get a chance to digest it beforehand. Okay. Would anyone like to start comments? Oh, you're, oh, you're going to do questions?
I just had a couple.
Okay. Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. So the mention of restrictions with property came up a couple times. Can you clarify, is a restriction prior to development or only after development?
Prior, yeah.
So prior to development. So I own a piece of property, it's in a specific zone, place in the city. This would put a restriction on that property that it has to be affordable?
Only if it was an area that had been up, that had received some sort of capacity increase, and where these affordable, affordable housing requirements were, were in place. Yeah.
I just want to make sure we answer your question completely, because I heard it two different ways. So first, you take the general zoning action for a site or an area. That, just like any zoning, if you had a wetland, it's sitting out there, it doesn't trigger anything immediately. If a project comes in that now wants to develop in that area, as part of the permitting process, they need to enter into an agreement that specifies exactly what they are going to do for affordability, and that gets recorded against the property, so that as the development occurs, the specific agreement for that site is already in place, and then gets administered over time.
Fabulous. So would this trigger mandatory affordable housing on land?
It potentially does, depending on each individual rezone and how you set up the rules. So in our cities, night now, other cities, there are about six situations where it's, or more, where it's mandatory, and there are several situations in which it's voluntary. And that different cities have used different approaches, and we're here to help you think that through and how you want to approach it in your particular case. So the ones that we did look at last year, some of which may come to you, they were designed to be mandatory.
So this, this doesn't make them mandatory, what we're looking at tonight doesn't make them mandatory?
Correct.
What would make them mandatory is what comes to us in the future.
Correct. So you can have some areas of the city where it's mandatory and some where it's violent. I mean, you can, you have that flexibility.
Okay.
And if I could just pick up on that, excuse me. So Arthur, could you talk a little bit to the, the, the way the provision is written, as I understand it, is that it would only kick in if they took advantage of the additional density? So if they built at the lower density, so that's not, okay, that's why I asked the question, because that makes a difference. So if it's upzoned, then even if they don't take advantage of the additional density, they would still be required to provide affordable housing?
That, that will be looked at on each individual situation.
As part of the.
As part of the, right. So you may have a situation where you grant the increase, and you say, and everybody is going to include affordable housing. In fact, Issaquah, just this spring went, and then the second situation is, you may have a base that says you have the right to go up, and as you go up, you have to give us a certain amount affordable. That's what Kenmore does in parts of its downtown. Issaquah, in their downtown, just flipped from the second approach to the first approach. They used to have a base, and they said, if you go up to here, you're going to give us. Now they've just changed to the, the maximum, and everybody, no matter if you use it all or not, have to give it the same percentage of affordability. That's what Redmond's been doing in their, many of their neighborhoods for 20 years, or they started with one, and they just added more neighborhoods over time. So different cities through the process have set at different approaches, and this is written in the way that you could use either one or some combination of both. Some Amish actually has a scenario that has, in their town center, a mandatory for a certain amount, and then that creates a new ceiling. And if you want to go above that ceiling, they have like 500 units that can be bought for that neighborhood in exchange for 33% of them being affordable. So you have a mandatory and a voluntary. So we've worked with cities, depending on the circumstance of all the players and the situation, to help them come up with different wrinkles, but all on the same economic approach, which is looking at the trade-off of how much you're granting in exchange for some affordability, either as an incentive or as a mandate.
And, and going through all those approaches with the various cities, what is, what is the ultimate goal to become an affordable city? How does one, how does a city become an affordable city?
Well, part of the, part of the dilemma with this whole system, I just had somebody come in my office and say, well, how come Redmond just hasn't changed the rules to make more units required? Well, we have land use rights in this country, and are in this state. And so therefore, you can't just arbitrarily say, I want 40% of the units to be affordable. You have a housing element that trades with the level of needs are. This is one tool to try to help get there, but that tool is tempered by the ability of the city to not just take without giving. There's a sort of balancing act that is generally implied through these programs. So we have, if you look at Kirkland, you'll see different areas have different requirements, because they granted some rezones back in the mid-'90s for downtown Granite Heights with no affordability at that time. The main thing I advise cities is, anytime you're doing anything to increase development capacity, that is the moment you must consider this. If you wait five years later, you can't. That's why in Issaquah, they have different things in different neighborhoods, is because they approached the initial rezone differently in certain areas. So the basic rule I, I've been trying to preach to cities for 25 years is, you change capacity, and it might be something like reduced parking even, in some areas, if that were to work. That can be an incentive as well. Anytime you do that, you should ask the question, are we giving a benefit to the developer that we could ask for some offsetting public benefit? And it plays out differently depending on how much. Kenmore is looking at the potential for very large density increases. Others have been small. That's why if you were to read all the local ordinances, you'll see such different levels of affordability, is because the rezone actions were so different in the different circumstances.
Thank you. That was, that was very helpful. And so I think you mentioned we're jumping 10 years ahead, because other cities have gone through the studying process previously. To me, it sounds like we, we have a, a much bigger picture to look at here. And what I'm, what I mean by that is, it sounds to me like, when you talk about affordable housing, it's not just an ordinance here and there, it's a master plan, correct? You, you have to look at it citywide, not just specifically. It seems like some of the cities have gone through some problems. So I think I heard you, I think Councilmember Agnew asked you the question about what you think of this? And I guess I would, I would tag on, ask you the question, for the city of Bothell, the size that we are currently right now, do we have a need for an increased amount of affordable housing?
I think your housing strategy and housing element say you do.
Okay.
And it's fairly significant.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's what I, I just wanted to hear that. Thank you.
So, before we launch into council comments, I don't have anyone signed up for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Going once, going twice? Are you sure? Okay. With that, I think Councilmember McNeil launched into comments, but does, would anyone else like to? Councilmembers, orange.
This is, this is just a brief comment. We had some discussion on other capacity increases, the, the, the language of that on page 80. And, and my only concern is when you were talking about single family becoming and allowing them to become duplexes, that the, that the housing dimensions stay the same. And so, when we look at multifamily, I looked at the phrase capacity increases. I hope to shout that this means any increases that are entertained go through the public process and, and the public weighs in because aside from a multifamily tax exemption, an MFTE, everything else is, is like an upzone. And I hope that when we talk about other capacity increases, that always goes for the public and they can weigh in on it. That's my only comment.
Actually, I, I wondered, Dave, would you like to tell us what you need to hear from us? I know there's the one question of three or five for the threshold, but are there other answers that you need from council as we make our comments?
Only if there are changes to what is proposed here. So, we've proposed five here and, and then basically we're asking council whether to approve this, this ordinance or, or to modify it. Yeah.
And then, Councilmembers, were you asking for, about MFTEs being in the ordinance or just making reference?
Oh, no. I was just saying that as far as an impact for, for the construct of the building, that aside from an MFTE, that's a tongue twister. Everything else, when you talk about parking reduction or density increase or height increase, those all have very noticeable impacts. And I would just request that that always go through a public process and the public is allowed to weigh in on.
And any of those would require an ordinance amendment, so that would go through public process.
Okay. So, do you, first, Councilmembers, do you want to weigh in on three or five? Or, or do you, are you okay with what's in the ordinance?
Five is totally sensible. I'm, I'm with it.
Councilmember Olson.
So, I'm good with five, the staff recommendation. Also, I just want to say thank you for walking through a lot of Davina's questions and the questions I had earlier and just realizing that this is really the base and the framework for the work that we'll do down the road and, and we're not making a lot of the, the hard and fast rules and the numbers now that'll come up with each neighborhood, each sub-area and everything. So, I think that's where I was getting tripped up and not seeing that in here yet, but realizing that that's still to come and this isn't the end-all. It's a living document as the areas and zones come up that we'll continue to work on though. So, thank you. I feel so much smarter now.
Other comments? Councilmember Agnew.
This has been a long process. I've been on this dais for a number of years, probably more than some citizens would like to see. But being said that, I can remember Councilmember Sandberg and I asking for affordable housing and, and it just being shut down. And then, I heard the other day that a family of four that makes $80,000 a year is low income, you know? I can remember when I started work, $80,000 a year was a lot of money, you know? But now, it's, it's low income. So, I, I am so excited that we're moving forward and we're going to try to reach out to the people that we need to reach out to.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. And this is probably more clarification because Councilmember McNeil talked about mandating as opposed to voluntary. And I'm a little, still a little bit concerned, I need a little bit more explanation on, this is not mandated. Is that correct?
This is establishing the code framework for mandatory affordability requirements. The same section can also be used for incentive-based requirements.
Right.
But right now, we're not, we're not doing any, any capacity increases that would mandate it.
Okay.
But it's, it's setting the stage for that in the future.
Right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil, comments? Okay. All right, I guess I'll go. I'm really, really pleased. This was on my wish list when I got on council, one of my most fervent hopes. Particularly was interested in doing a citywide ordinance because I, I felt like that made the most sense in terms of really moving it forward. And so, I, I watched, I think, all of the planning commission meetings with, with avid eyes and ears and really enjoyed the process and learning so much about it. I know a lot of work has gone into this and I really appreciate everyone's thoughtful work and process. I think Bothell, it sounds like we're long overdue because I'm hearing about cities 20 years ago who, who started affordable housing. I think it's unfortunate that Councilmember Agnew and Sandberg weren't, weren't listened to the last time we did a comprehensive plan update. It's a missed opportunity for sure. So, I'm really pleased. I, I do look forward to hopefully coming forward something about MFTEs and because in all of the, I guess, education that I've been exposed to, that comes up over and over again is something that's really critical to, to nearly every project. And so, hopefully that's forthcoming. But thank you again for, for all your hard work. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt the proposed ordinance provided as attachment one, approving the Affordable Housing chapter and related amendments within the Title 12 zoning BMC consistent with the planning commission's recommendations with the gray text boxes removed prior to the major mayor's signature.
Second.
Oh, my goodness. I think I heard Councilmember McNeil. So, motion made by Councilmember Agnew, seconded by Councilmember McNeil. With that, let's place our votes. Motion carries unanimously with Mayor Rayum absent and excused. Yeah, I think we should take a 10-minute break or we'll convene, I guess 8:45, it's a nice round number.